Row, Kyle.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you, Tina. Before we start the meeting, some thank yous need to go out. Some of our departments received a call this week from Tommy Bible at Jefferson Co. Gas. Of course, that was concerning the restaurant that had a severe gas leak. And he would have liked to have been here himself to personally thank the fire department, the police department for the job well done, the professionalism in helping prevent a major disaster. And that comes from Tommy Bible, and he may try to be here at next month's meeting, but that meant so much to him. And I think a lot of people in the community don't realize what a touch-and-go situation had developed out there. And this proves that our officers, our firemen, are all trained to deal with such events as that. And we appreciate you all so much.
And Newport Utilities was also mentioned in that group, the fire and police and the utility, there was also mention, too. Appreciate all y'all did to get that thing on the record.
And the street department. We had a great snow. I enjoyed it. I hope everyone did.
Except for the street department.
Except for the street department. But I have, in all my years, I have never seen the streets open up as quick as they did during this event. And that was one of the biggest snows we've had in several years. And the street department, I never went on a road anywhere, and I kind of rode around. There was not a road anywhere that hadn't been scraped and somehow treated to make traffic movable for most everyone. And street department being you all will be commended for that. Have I left anybody out that anybody knows of? Okay, item three is the approval of the minutes for the meeting on December the 13th, 2016. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I hear none. Before we get, there's no proclamations under four. James, before I get to your report, the agenda went out a day or two earlier because of the inclement weather that was being forecast. And Newport Utilities was going to ask to be on the agenda, so I would like to get council to make a motion and a second and approve waiving the rules so that they can be placed as the last item on the new business.
So moved, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Okay, item five, report from City Administrator James Fincham.
Well, thank you, Mayor. If you'd kept talking, I wouldn't have had anything, because you got to mine.
Well, I was trying to.
Tommy Bible also contacted me and expressed his appreciation and bragged on all our people about what a good job they did, so I had that on here. And also, I had the implementation plan for the broadband for NUB. The only other thing I have, you all had asked that we get the folks that did our roof to take a look at the grammar school roof. They have done that, and they have sent back a report. I've got it here. It's many pages long. I didn't bring copies, but I'd be glad to get you a copy if you want it. But the number they came back with to do a roof, an encapsulated roof up there like they did here, with a 15-year warranty, it was $104,000. And with a 20-year warranty, it's $107,000. And so, that's the report back that they made. All this has been sent to the grammar school, so they are aware of the findings and have a copy of it. And that's all I got.
Big difference in what they priced it at versus getting those set eyes on it.
That's right.
James, what's the status of the distillery down near the Hatfield and McCoy's? I've heard several rumors, but...
Well, they're working. They've been down there every day working. If you go inside or when you can see, I'm not been inside, but I've looked through the doors that are open, and you can see they're doing framing in their framework, subdividing the building, but I couldn't tell you how far along they are with that.
Mr. Barbour, you could...
I'd heard...
Okay, well, Mr. Graham, I saw him.
Yeah, he's here.
Won't you give an update real quick, if you don't mind, because we talked to you before the meeting?
I think I've been speaking with several of you about what's been going on down there, that they had some delays with some health issues with some of the partners involved there, so that's why we're just going to see what you see down there. But spoken to the investors and the group down here that you see on a daily basis, both times over the last couple of weeks, they're getting back on track now, so we'll share us some updates pretty real soon. I've asked them after we meet this week, the government, and the next meeting, to give them updates on where they are. They are due for their annual progress reports in April. I'll go back to the... So they'll be providing that progress report in that year. You know, where they're at right now, I think they just got approval from the state with their license, renewals. They have just hired a master distiller for that. And then hopefully, they'll be finishing up the interior, I guess, or the exterior before too long. It's delayed sufficiently since the last, is what they project and hope, but it looks like they're picking back those things before. So hopefully that...
Have we released our money yet, the $100,000 that we were to, the grant?
Have.
Pardon? We've released half of it. Has their financial, do you know whether their financial situation changed in any way?
Not at this point. And we'll be happy if, assuming that our discussions go well with repair, and then we will have options at that point to make sure everything's good, but they do contract with their provisions and go out and provide by those if they don't perform, and they are obligated to pay back that money.
Okay. Have they lost a name, Hatfield and McCoy?
At this point, no, they have not.
Okay.
There was possibility of that happening at one point. Since then, they have indicated the grant is in the back, restored. So hopefully that will continue, but we've asked to verify that and rather than give insurance that they will.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lucas. Okay. Item six is board appointment. Police civil service appointed by the civil service board itself has appointed Stephen Smith, and we need to verify that by vote. No?
No.
We don't?
No.
Okay. Okay. Item seven, report from Tanner Preservation Alliance.
I don't have anything.
Thanks, Carla. Item eight, old business. Consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2016-12, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title VII Fire Protection and Fireworks Chapter III Fire Codes, adopting the 2012 International Fire Code and the 2012 NFPA 101 Life Safety Code to the municipal code.
Mayor, I just about read that full caption, but let me reread it just to make sure we've got it right. It's ordinance number 2016-12 and ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code Title VII Fire Protection and Fireworks Chapter III Fire Codes, adopting of the 2012 International Fire Code and the 2012 NFPA 101 Life Safety Code.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve on the first reading?
This would be the second.
Second reading.
Second, Mayor.
My agenda says the first.
We approved this life. This would be the second reading after we had the public hearing a few minutes ago.
Okay.
I think the agenda says first, but the orange paper here says the second.
Second reading.
Yeah, I make the motion to accept on second reading.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Thank you. Let's move to new business. Item A is consideration of resolution 2017-01, authorizing the City of Newport to apply for the Community Development Block Grant.
This is, this is just keeping in mind the time of the CUG should, unless in February, we need to do this so that if we find a section of the downtown stormwater repairs that need to be made, that can be a good phase one that we can find funding for, so we're not just using straight tax dollars for this, and this is what it is. Again, it doesn't commit us to anything unless we are awarded the grant, accepted, and then you all vote on the actual project.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I make the motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. You're welcome. Thank you.
Just to make sure the record is straight, when we had the public hearing, it was mentioned as the first reading. And in the agenda, it's mentioned on the vote as the first reading, but it's actually the second reading, just so we'll make sure we've got the record correct for that.
Item B is discussion of audit for fiscal year 2015-16, Brown, Jake, and McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I think you all have the audit booklet in front of you that contains your government-wide and fund financial statements. We did complete that in December. It was filed with Comptroller's Office during that timeframe on a timely basis. It is quite a comprehensive document. It's about 120 pages long or so. It does contain all of the entities that are included in the city government, which does include the school system, its general purpose school fund, and its federal projects fund, and its cafeteria fund. It also includes Newport Utilities as a departmental business enterprise of the city, both its electric department and its water and sewer department. So they're included in this report also, and includes separate financial statements for them, along with footnote disclosures related to them. But obviously, I think you all would be primarily concerned with the governmental funds of the city, which your major governmental fund is your general fund. You do have several other special revenue funds, capital projects fund, and so forth. So those are included in this report also. The table of contents does describe, you know, the contents in detail. I would point out just three or four things that I think would be most concerning to you. Starting on page four is the instant audit report. It's three pages long. It is a standard report. It does cover all the entities that I just described to you, as far as their financial activities from July the 1st, 15th, and June 30th, 16th. If you look at that report, the first paragraph describes the entities that we're giving an opinion on, since the governmental entities has two sets of statements here, a government-wide statement and fund financial statements, which mirror budget adoption type of statements. Those are listed here in the description of those entities that are considered, governmental activities, business type activities, each major fund, and the remaining aggregate fund information, along with the notes to the financial statements, and that makes up the basic financial statements of the city. It talks about management's responsibility in the second paragraph. It talks about the auditors' responsibility in the third, fourth, and fifth paragraph. I'll point out that we did audit under three levels of audit standards in doing this audit. We follow the generally accepted audit standards here in the U.S. We follow governmental audit standards issued by the federal government. And because you had major programs and the federal expenditures in the city on combined basis were over $750,000, we also did a single audit engagement related to your federal assistance programs. So those are included in this report also. On page five at the top is our opinions on all these documents. And we do state there that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the governmental activities, which is the schools in the city, the business type activities, which is Newport Utilities, apartments, each major fund, which in this case, there's two major funds presented, the general fund of the city and the general purpose school fund of the schools, and the aggregate remaining information, which is all the other funds on a combined basis, and the respective budgetary comparisons for the general fund and the general purpose school fund. We did not have any modifications in any way to the financial statements, and they're fairly presented in all material respects, and this is a clean opinion on all the financial statements. The rest of the information does discuss the supplementary information, management's discussion analysis. There's a lot of trend information here related to pension plans, since both the city and the schools are participatory in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, several plans. That data on a trend basis is included. We give a positive assurance opinion on all the supplementary information. However, the introductory and management discussion analysis and pension trend information is management's documents, or they've been furnished by the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. We do not give an opinion on those. And lastly, on page six, we tell the reader of the financial statements that there are two other reports that we've issued as auditors that are required under a governmental audit here in Tennessee, and that's a internal control report at both the financial statement level and on compliance, and also a second report that's required by uniform guidance in the United States related to the major program activity that you receive in federal expenditures. And, you know, we're telling the reader those exist. They need to read those to get a full picture of the audit engagement. So we've given a clean opinion. The management discussion analysis that follows has a lot of good information in it, some condensed tables. It's a good read for you all to look through and better understand the financial statements and the activities that occurred during the year. You all did have a hearing in Newport. You had a good financial year this year. You had good growth in your fund balance, and you had good profitability in your utilities, and the school system operated within their acceptable range. Fund balance continues to grow to get you all really on solid footing that you were not in three years ago financially. You've had two good years of fund balance growth, and it's putting you in a position where your net fund balance position is getting to an acceptable level, and your cash flow position is greatly improved. And to keep you from having to take on tax anticipation notes that you've done for a long time, you've been able to avoid that. So I commend you, I commend your management and the board on taking the actions necessary to get yourself in a better financial position and greater financial stability. So I've got a lot of good things to say about your financial growth and your revenue and fund balance growth. You can go through the report on your own, and you can see that. If you want to look at the general fund in particular, and I would encourage you to do that, you can find a budget versus actual analysis, starting on page 34, and it goes from several pages, but you'll see line by line your budgetary revenues and your budgetary expenditures in the general fund, which is your major operating fund, and see the kind of growth that you had there. You kept expenses under control that were very comparable, while you did make a lot of good improvements in your capital outlay area on equipment and needs in the city, kind that you planned to go over a two- or three-year period. Lastly, I would point to the reports in the back of this document. They start on page, I guess, turn back to page 120. This is the first internal control compliance report at financial statement level that's required under governmental audit standards. It talks about the activities of the city. We're not required to audit internal control. We are required to consider and plan our audit engagement and the test of both procedures and substantive testing that we're going to perform. And in doing that, if we do determine that there are deficiencies, we are required to rank those and to communicate those as they exist as being either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Those definitions are in this report. And I'm happy to tell you that we did not have any findings this year. Last year, we had one finding. This is the first time since we've been doing the engagement that the city has not had any findings in their internal control compliance report. So I think you should be very proud of that, both the support that the board as a governing body gives management and management's department heads and their employees, that will go to an extra effort to make sure that you are safeguarding assets and employing proper segregation duties in your operation. So you've come a long way really in the last three years in that regard to where you were if you went back and looked at these reports five, 10 years ago, when, you know, frankly, there sometimes was 20 to 30 findings. So I commend you greatly on that. So this is a clean report with no findings. Turn over to page 122. This report is reported on the major federal programs that were tested. This particular year, we've, the threshold for major program and federal assistance for a single audit, $750,000. The city as a whole, including the utilities, the city and the schools, received about $2.8 million of federal funding. We tested approximately 40, more than 40% of that is required. And in testing that, those programs and determining the programs that needed to be tested this year, the concentration level of those fell to Newport Utilities' lands here tonight. We've already presented their report back in December, and they received a clean report also, as they have for several years. And we've not had any findings in quite a while at the school system. And in regard to their major programs we tested, which was some Appalachian Regional Commission Grants related to the Grassy Fork area and their Community Development Block Grant related to that particular area, we didn't have any findings or question cost related to their program dollars for their report. So I'm sure they're proud of that, and you all should be, too. On page 124, it describes the programs that we tested, and that schedule of findings and question cost outlines the fact that we had no findings in either area or significant efficiencies. And finally, on page 125 here in Tennessee, the Comptroller requires that you show how you dispose, or did you dispose prior to your findings, and that page shows the one finding related to TCRS last year that was not repetitive in current year audit engagement. Just clear that up. So that's just a little review of the financial statements. And if you review these, have any questions, you know, more than happy to be available. Call me, email me, or whatever, if you find any detailed questions you have that Tina and James can answer for you, and I'll entertain any questions.
Frank, I just want to thank you, commend you and your company. Worked with you for all these years. Y'all have done an excellent job, very professional. And above all, we thank you for having Homegrown Haley with your company. That's a very excellent addition to your company. We really appreciate her.
Haley does an excellent job. I'll brag on her. She's from here in Newport, obviously, but she's been with us quite a long time, and she's the in-charge fieldwork supervisor on this engagement and numerous other governmental engagements, not just here. She's also the in-charge fieldwork on Severville, Danbridge, White pine, and some other cities that we do, because we do about nine to 10, and about eight other systems.
Well, this audit, yeah, this audit mirrors this council's intentions to make Newport a better place, and sometimes you have to make hard decisions, and they're to be commended. And Tina and James and his staff, the whole staff, especially those two, as far as keeping up with the financials of the city, it's wonderful. It's relaxing to know that our city is in good hands and very trustworthy to get to that point.
Well, I mentioned this earlier, and I'll compliment them on this, and I told you all that, you know, this isn't a historical document, so this is past already. You can see what the results are, but the information you get on a monthly basis, daily, weekly basis, that's important in decision-making and being responsive, you know, to your citizens' needs. And to know that you can better rely on that information, that it has integrity and carried weight in making decisions in your decision process and your deliberations, that's very important, not only to you all, but for the function that you carry out for your citizens. So I commend them on that, that you can have that kind of reliability in the information you're currently dealing with.
Frank, I just like to say that, appreciate your findings, and in this case, no findings. A lot of people, we're two years into this thing, and we've had to make some tough decisions, but, you know, you commended us, and we're commended in that group. I want to, you know, commend the citizens. They are the ones that had to bite the bullet for us, and a lot of people, you know, base progress on maybe bricks and mortar, but this right here shows us, shows me, that we're making some progress, you know, and for the citizens who, you know, put faith in us to make these crazy and tough decisions. I don't think we would be seeing this right now. So I think we're making progress. Still a lot of things to do, but this is a good start.
I think if people know where the money's going and what the benefits out of it, knowing there's not waste, just doing what you're trying to do. If they understand the whole truth, I don't think there's near as much gripe and baddie as there has been. I believe things are getting calmed down.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Let's give our community a hand. Okay, item three is consideration of requests for annual events from Cock County Partnership. You've got that list. Lynn, you need to talk about these to us?
Just asking if I've had any wanting to do the concert series again and have five concerts this year, and I've got the dates on the paperwork. And then the street festival, it's the same weekend as always, the first weekend of October, and then the Christmas parade, it's the second Saturday of December.
Do we have a motion to approve this for them?
Make the motion to approve.
It's got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any noes? I hear none. Thank you, Lynn. Okay, the item that we waived the rules to add to the agenda, the NUB broadband program.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, for suspending the rules today to let us get on the agenda, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to educate yourselves about the smart grid broadband program. So here's why I'm here tonight, to request approval for the following items, and they're grouped into one large approval. Approval of the electric smart grid slash broadband implementation business plan, next steps. Authority to apply for interim financing in the amount of $8.5 million plus interest, which will very likely be a callable bond or other type of interim financing vehicle that meets our requirements to bridge the gap until our rural utility system loan funds become available. And the authority to apply for USDA slash RUS electric smart grid loans or other federal or state grants that are available any and all. That's the end of the request.
Okay.
You did make the comment, I mean, this doesn't come out of the consumers.
This does not, this does not come out of the electric funds at all.
Right.
Doesn't affect the electric bills at all.
I've been to two different workshops that they've had out there on this, and I think it's one of the things, if you go through, that make the most biggest progress in our county, city and county that's been made in years, I mean, people might have far behind me all, but I think it just will make a great big difference putting this up in the next century.
Glenn, expanding on what he said there, I've attended one of those workshops. This is something that a select few in the state have, right? Bristol, Chattanooga, and...
14, 14, about 14 counties in the state.
And when you first talked about this, way back when, talking about the feasibility study, I went in with open ears and didn't really know what I was getting into as far as learning, but from the reports that this Magellan advisors offered, and the possibilities of it, you know, I echo what Coach Proffler said, I don't think we know what the upside of this is. Of course, Magellan painted a pretty picture, and I think it's a realistic picture, and the numbers that they presented with, you know, their percentages of people accepting the, becoming, us becoming their provider, was, meant was on a low level. But, you know, for our future, our financial future, you know, I commend, you know, your due diligence on this, and if the numbers back up what Magellan says, this is going to be something that's going to be a feather in Newport's hat for a long time, not only financially, but for, you know, the almighty jobs that could come with this. So I'm very impressed with your due diligence, and your staff's due diligence as well.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve for them?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a second? Any other questions or discussion?
Well, Mayor, just for the record, I think it'd be good that you read exactly what we're approving, the three steps, so that that would be a form of motion.
Okay. Step one would be the approval of the electric smart grid broadband implementation business plan, next steps. Number two would be the authority to apply for interim financing in the amount of $8.5 million plus interest, accountable bond or other type of an interim financing vehicle that meets our requirements to bridge the gap until RUS loan funds become available. And item three, authority to apply for USDA slash RUS electric smart grid loan and other federal or state grants that are available.
RUS rural utilities services. That's your motion?
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's your second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Glenn.
Appreciate the work y'all done.
Great job.
You paid for utilities, I appreciate the job y'all done, I know you've been a great effort out there, appreciate it.
Okay, there's no bids on the agenda tonight, comments from citizens. Now, C, you need to have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Anybody against it?